Lori.
Thank you, Mayor. After you leave the grandmother of all rummage sales on Saturday, please head over to Sagas High School for their annual boutique fantastique, which is an amazing fundraiser that they hold every year and raise money for scholarships for students. It is a great example of parents and community coming together to do what's best for kids. So I hope you will plan to stop by that between the two things. You can get all your holiday shopping done. I mentioned this two weeks ago, that it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it's been really wonderful to see what has happened in the community to bring awareness and to raise money for a great cause. There was a wonderful wine event. I know that Marcia was there. The Seroptimists of the Greater Santa Clarita Valley held a wine event at the mall on Town Center Drive. It was great for local business. People were shopping and drinking, which is better than drinking and driving, but drinking and shopping can be very dangerous as well. Salt Creek held a wine tasting as well to benefit the Breast Imaging Center. And just a lot of support this month. There are two women that I would like to recognize who are heroes, that I would give them gold medals if they were here. One of them is Diane Crawford, who has done so much for this community, but recently donated $25,000 from her pink ribbon gifts and other projects to the Sheila Arvillo's Breast Imaging Center, which is just beyond generous. And also Gail McCloskey, who is a local businesswoman who owns an affair extraordinaire, and she has been the spokesperson for 2008 for Breast Cancer Awareness. And she has such an incredible story to share about early detection and moving quickly and calling your friends and working together to get the resources that you need so that you can be a survivor. And I just have been hammering this with my friends all month, and so we'll continue to remind people. This is the month to think about it, so you have a couple more days to bug everybody about getting their mammogram and having, being diligent that we stay on it with our family and friends. Thank you.
Excuse me. Lori, do you know what? I know that Zonta is having Healthy Woman's Day, where anyone who doesn't, woman who does not have health insurance at the moment can go and get an exam. And I cannot recall if it's this Saturday or the next.
I bet Gloria Mercato can tell us.
Oh, it was last Saturday.
She's popping up out of her chair.
Never mind, it was last Saturday.
And I do want to add that Sheila Arvillo's has said that anyone who needs a mammogram, who cannot afford one, should go there, and they will take care to find the resource so that that can happen. So that's something that the community definitely is behind.
Okay. Thanks. Well, thank you, Zonta, for doing it last Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Couple comments, if I may please. And Marcia, you were quite correct. I did attend the Sagas Union School District Centennial this past Sunday. I got to tell you, I was so impressed. What a huge turnout. I don't know what the head count was. It looked like there had to be a couple of thousand people out there. It was a great celebration in spite of the warm weather. And congratulations to the union, Sagas Union School District, for 100 years of excellence. We're very proud of that school district in our community. And Lorene, thank you for mentioning the Artists Association. You bet. What a great event. I was there last year, and I would not miss it this year. It'll be on November the 9th. I also wanted to acknowledge that we've had two town hall meetings now. Last night was the most recent one in the Canyon Country area, and I see some familiar faces in the audience. Thank you so much for coming out. Our next meeting will be over in the New Hall area, which will be on Monday, the 3rd, and that will be at New Hall Elementary at 7:00 PM. I strongly encourage folks from throughout the Santa Clarita Valley to attend, but certainly specifically the New Hall area folks, particularly that evening. And then on the following Monday, the final one will take place. That'll be Monday, the 10th, 7:00 PM, of course, once again, and that will be at Bridgeport Park for the Valencia area. And it's a great opportunity, and I'll tell you, it's a great opportunity for the city manager and myself to have an opportunity to directly visit and talk with our citizens and hear your concerns, and most of it is, are listening to you. And thank you very much for your attendance. We're going into that time of year, obviously, a lot of social activities, a lot of programs for various charities have been mentioned. I want to mention two, if I may, and one of them benefits the Boys and Girls Club, a tremendous organization in our community. I know we all feel very strong about it. And that is our annual Festival of Trees. This will be the sixth annual Festival of Trees here in the city of Santa Clarita. Proceeds will benefit, again, the Boys and Girls Club. It will be held on November the 15th, and it is open to the public at the Hyatt. So this is a great opportunity to bring the children and the families, see all of the magnificent trees, gingerbread houses, Santa, and just the complete holiday spirit and Christmas season to be celebrated. That evening, they have the gala at the hotel, of course. That's always a big evening, and you can get tickets by contacting the Boys and Girls Club, and I just happen to have a number here for you, 254-3063, 254-3063. And I know I always enjoy attending that one. I learned of one just today, and our Congressman Buck McKean was there. As a matter of fact, he was asked to be the honorary chairman, and it is the Birdies for the Brave. It is a golf fundraiser for our military troops. It will be held on November the 24th at Valencia Country Club. The folks, a lot of us do not have an opportunity to play Valencia, being a private club, so this is a great opportunity to join in, go over and play golf at the Valencia Country Club. Beginning will be on the 24th, 9:00 AM check-in with an 11:00 AM shotgun start. I know I'm certainly looking forward to attending. Obviously, it's tax deductible, and it, the money will be used to spread out over about four or five various military programs, all 501(c)(3)'s, Home for our Troops, Special Operations Warrior Foundation, the Intrepid Fallen Heroes Fund, Naval Special Warfare Foundation, Wounded Warrior Project, and Operation Home Front. And this, I can't think of a better way to say thank you for our military and all of their dedicated service to their country than by participating in this event. I look forward to seeing everybody out there. Okay, with that, we'll move forward. I believe we're at the executive portion of our meeting, and I will ask my fellow council members if there's anything that they want to have polled or comment on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may interject, item two on the consent calendar has been withdrawn. That item should be deleted from your agenda.
Very well. Item number two is deleted, and may or may not be rescheduled at this time?
May or may not.
Thank you very much. So two is deleted. Council, other items?
Item 10.
Beg your pardon?
Item 10. Do we have speakers on item 10?
We do have speakers.
We have a speaker on item four, several on item 10, and a written comment card on item 11.
Sharon, I'm going to ask you to repeat that. You had speakers on four?
Item four, several on item 10, and a written comment card on 11.
Any other requests by council? May I ask that item 10, I think it would be best, I know that there's a number of people who want to speak on that, that maybe we could make that, pull it for a separate vote? That would be acceptable to my fellow council members? Okay, we'll have a separate vote on item number 10. This time, is there an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The minutes for October 14th?
So moved.
Second.
And hearing no objections, so ordered. And the minutes for the special city council meeting held on October the 16th?
So moved.
Second.
And once again, no objections, so ordered. Okay, at this time, we will move over to the consent calendar, and we have speakers on item number four? Okay, item number four, Carla Hicks, please. While you're coming forward, Carla, item number four is Safe Roots to School Infrastructure Project, award construction project contract. Carla?
Yes, I just wanted to say, on behalf of New Hall Elementary, thank you for selecting us to be the recipient of that project. We are proud to be in partnership with the city of Santa Clarita to keep the children safe, and we appreciate your diligence in trying to work around our school schedule. Sir, there was the least amount of disruption for our students, our parents, and the community. So we wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Carla has two very talented girls. One was a dancer for Valencia, and the other one was also talented All-American soccer player, was a field goal kicker for the football team. So they're very amazing and bright, like 4.0 kids.
Great. Another speaker on item number four is Rudy Ramirez. Rudy?
Good evening, distinguished council members and Sir Mayor. My name is Rudy Ramirez. I'm the school principal over at Cedar Creek Elementary School at Sagas Union School District, and I'm here with David Riddick, also our assistant principal. And like Carla was saying, just thank you for the, for the work that's going to be happening over on Camp Plenty for Cedar Creek and also at Santa Clarita Elementary School. Thank you to the hard work that Ian and Amalia have done in working with us in our community so we can cause the least amount of disruptions as we look at student safety at our school. What they're going to do at Cedar Creek is create two bowl bouts. And those of you that are familiar with that community right below Canyon High School and in between Sierra Vista Middle School, it's the only thoroughfare out of that Canyon Country community. And every morning, it just really impacted. So hopefully these bowl bouts will really not only free up some traffic lanes for the community to come in and out, but also shorten the span so the kids can commute back and forth on the public street. So just for safety of the students. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Our community appreciates that, and so does our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. On item, item number 11, it's the LMD Zone T-47 North Park Slope Improvement. We have a comment card, and it is in support of the recommendation from your comments here, Mr. Heffernan. Are you out there, sir?
Yeah.
Would you like to come forward and make comment?
No, I don't need to.
But did you want to come out that you're in support of it?
Great question.
Thank you very much, sir. Council, that, if we take item 10 separate, is there any further comment on the remaining items? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number 10. It's indicated we have a number of speakers. Item 10 is Local Public Television Management. Looks like we have about a dozen or so speakers. If it pleases the council, we'll move forward with the speakers. Our first speaker will be Kelly Nish, followed by Phillips Gourze, followed by Leon Warden. Kelly?
My name is Kelly Nish. I am a current student at AOC on the campus of COC. And spring semester 2007, I was enrolled in Advanced Television Production, RTV225 is the course. And in my findings with COC and with that course, we really interacted with public access TV, and they were extremely professional. And as a broadcast journalism major, it was, I feel it's a necessity to have, and it's a great tool. In my time there, we basically, they would give us chances to work there and have live TV shows, and we'd be able to anchor, and they would show, excuse me, they would air them immediately following our tapings. And I think it's just a great tool for the community, and it's a necessity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Our next speaker would be Phillips Gourze.
Hi, thank you. Most of you know who I am. My name is Phillips Gourze. About 1996, we started a television program called Hart District TV. And by "we," I mean the Hart High School District as well as the city of Santa Clarita. We decided we wanted to put out a program where high school students could show us what was happening in our community, events in our schools, and events in our cities. And we've done a pretty good job of it so far. We've got about 100 or more episodes in the can. And one of the things I'd like to bring forth today is that a sidebar of putting this class together was the fact that we got to go to a television studio and actually work with professionals in using real equipment. It's one thing to take a high school student in a classroom with equipment and other high school students, but it's completely another thing to take them down to a professional place where they have to act like adults. And believe me, they rise to the occasion. And one of the things that I appreciate the most is the fact that I could take my students there, and when they're there, they're working with professionals in the industry. It's one of the new things that's happening in education right now. It's called career tech ed, and my kind of class and ROP is perfect to take students out into the community and show them what it's like to be a professional and to work with professionals. I'd like to continue this association, and I'd like to continue working at the public access studio with my students and with professionals. I know there's some discussion tonight about what we're going to go, where we're going to go with this particular place. If you need a model for a city partnering with arts or industry, take a look at the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. I was the technical director there when they opened in 96, and it's still going strong, and they hired professionals at the time, myself included, and those professionals are still there. Anyway, I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. And I want to make a quick comment, if I can. This gentleman has earned an incredible reputation as just a phenomenal teacher. And another attribute he has, he's probably one of our foremost historians for the Santa Clarita Valley. I don't think there's anything that's happened in the last 200 years in this valley that this gentleman would not know about. Thank you very much for your fine service. Appreciate it. Leon Warden, you'll be followed by Jonathan Amador, Amadar, followed by Mr. John Dell.
Thank you, Mayor and council staff. Leon Warden, President of SCV TV, Vice Presidents Fred Trueblood and Mike Mizetti. As Time Warner reduced its Channel 20 staff from four to three, and then two, our nonprofit organization has worked to make up the difference, providing multimedia services and educational opportunities to Mr. Gourze's students in the Hart District, and the COC, and the city, and all SCV nonprofits. Your staff report acknowledges that we have the expertise and the partnerships that you were looking for, so I won't go into that except to say that our plan brings together the entire community in a non-competitive environment with the single purpose of community service. Your RFP asked for a lot, and we delivered a proposal in July that I hope you've had a chance to see, which leverages the resources of all of the stakeholders, the city, COC, the Hart District, the nonprofit sector, the Signal, and KHTS, I know a lot of them are here this evening, to meet all of the goals in the RFP, and to build a million-dollar television channel on the $278,000 annual budget. Now, if you were to reduce Channel 20's current annual $300,000 or so dollar budget to a $25,000 staff position through June, as the staff is recommending, you won't be running DVDs from the nonprofits like the Senior Center, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the Boys and Girls Club, and the Artists Association, Michael Hoffmann, because those DVDs won't exist. There won't be anybody to make them for them. You know, as I mentioned, we work with Hart students and COC students who use Channel 20. They intern with us, and we use them to cover local news and city events. $25,000 is not going to provide the staff support to keep those kinds of partnerships going with Hart and COC. I want to make sure that, you know, everybody's aware that the city collects about $1 million a year in cable franchise fees, plus another $200,000, $250,000 that you've started collecting this year. That's not property tax, it's not sales tax. Those are fees that are paid by cable television customers. You know, Santa Clarita chooses not to, but most cities do use at least some of those franchise fees, and I can go over the list with you if you are interested, to support public television. There are several other funding sources that were for public TV that were never available as long as Time Warner was operating the channel. Can't go into all of them in three minutes, but I absolutely am available for questions if you want to go over that. Bottom line is, we aren't asking you to fully fund our $278,000 annual budget. The city contribution diminishes over time as we develop these brand-new funding sources. What we're asking is that you give us, together with the Hart District, COC, and the nonprofits, a chance to keep the existing services, and then let the community develop news, sports, educational programming, the kind that was never available while Time Warner was running the channel. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Next speaker, Jonathan Namdar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is John Amador, and I'm a professor of radio, television, and film at College of the Canyons. Although I'm not acting as a representative of the college directly, or the Fine and Performing Arts Division that I teach in, I am speaking as a professional educator who serves this community. I'm here to speak to the exemplary service and the relationship that public access television, and also specifically SCV TV, has provided in supporting our instruction at College of the Canyons. And I'm also here to speak to the great value that public access has in providing our students with opportunities to apply their learning. In support of SCV TV's recommendation in pursuing another option for contracting with the city, I would like to shed some light on the positive impact that Leon and his staff have had on our students and our instructional programs. We have a wonderful working and professional relationship with SCV TV, and I know the people who run SCV TV nonprofit. I have witnessed Leon's support of our instructional programs directly. He serves as a mentor, who speaks in our classrooms and helps critique our student work. He also speaks to provide insights to the industry, and provides feedback on our students' productivity and their ability to produce professional content. He also serves as a member of our program advisory committee, and has volunteered in supporting, making the program and curriculum recommendations for us. I also know Susan Shapiro personally, as she's a fine instructor who taught video studio production at COC. SCV TV collaborates and assists us in development of our program's Cougar News program, which airs on public access Channel 20. And by supporting the training of students in the field, SCV TV and public access often have assisted us in cooperative news coverage of local events and representing the local voice. SCV TV provides opportunities for our students to be involved directly in the production of local breaking news stories, and also charitable event coverage. These are two aspects that help us to model professional and real-world training outside of the classroom setting. Channel 20 is important to us because we rely both on playback of our department's Cougar News broadcasts and the continued access that live television provides for onsite production. In the past two years, our Radio, Television, and Film Department has produced news content that airs regularly on public access television, and we have produced other benefit events such as the United Way Telethon for the community. College of the Canyons Radio, Television, and Film Program provides experience-based learning. That's at the heart of what we do, and it's integral to career technical training, which is a mission that we have at the college, and instilling that experience for our students. Another prime example of this is this coming November 4th, Cougar News will be producing a live newscast covering the election night. So we're just very pleased to speak on behalf of our support, my support personally, for SCV TV, as well as the opportunities that it presents for our students and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker will be John Dell, and he's coming forward. I'm a little confused on something. I have to tell you that I thought that SCV TV was owned by a person who's not here this evening, that actual title, if you will. Mr. Dell, come forward, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am speaking tonight on behalf of KHTS AM 1220 radio. As news director for Santa Clarita's only radio station, I believe that Santa Clarita needs a variety of media outlets to share information. The city's current proposal tonight reduces coverage for Channel 20, which is not, I believe, to be in the best interests of our valley. Fred Trueblood, Mike Mizetti, and Leon Warden have put together a plan for Channel 20 that will make it a vibrant alternative media outlet. Their vision uses programming partners including COC, the Hart District, the Signal, and KHTS radio, with each of these entities providing their own unique programming content. KHTS did not bid on the RFP because we didn't believe that we can make it viable on our own. The numbers for us just didn't add up. But with Fred, Mike, and Leon's concept, each entity will be able to create programming. They've been able to leverage the talents and resources of all the major stakeholders to build the channel that people will actually want to watch, because it's serving the needs not just of the city, or of COC, or of the Hart District, or Signal, or even KHTS, but of all of us combined. In addition, the SCV TV group will provide a valuable tool by assisting the nonprofits to produce compelling programming. From our perspective, this is a sensible course to take, one that will, in the end, give the city and our valley exposure for vibrant and diverse television channel. Most other cities use a portion of their franchise fee to pay for local community programming. We urge you to go with the alternate recommendation and select SCV TV as Channel 20's operator, but even if the council, in these challenging economic times, cannot expand the programming at Channel 20, we do hope that you will bring this diverse group of people back to the table at a time when it is economically feasible for you to do so. And I do also want to finish just by speaking on behalf of myself. Born and raised here in Santa Clarita, I went through some programs at COC in Cal State Northridge to get my degree in film and television, and I tell you, it's something I could have used a lot, and I wish I did. I didn't until I got into CSUN, and I got in a live studio and really got to work, I really saw the benefit of that. And I will tell you, I actually had to come back to COC to get some of that experience that CSUN did not offer because of COC's partnership with Channel 20. And now on the other end of things, we've got a line out the door of interns that I just, we have interns at KHTS, they're working with us year-round, and I just can't fit them all. They've got bright kids that are here, and I'd love to accommodate them, but I think this partnership will go a long way to help the future, as we recognize some of our youth that have grown up to do amazing things here today. I think you have the chance to set the table for some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Erin Fitzgerald will be followed by Tim Ben Boitzen. Tim Ben will be followed by Alan Firdman. Erin?
Good evening. My name is Erin Fitzgerald. I'm a student at COC studying television production. I just want to speak on my experience using the outlet that SCV TV and Channel 20 has provided. Through their partnership with COC, I've been able to produce and report live from their studio, and they've aired our school news for quite a while now. SCV TV provides the only outlet in this valley for students to showcase their work. Mr. Leon Warden has continually provided support and encouragement to the students at COC, as I specifically speak of the Radio, Television, and Film Department students. Mr. Warden has assisted the TV production students at COC, in particular those who produce Cougar News, in airing a number of live shows. And the live shows have been an experience that we've never have had without Channel 20, and won't have if the studio and set are no longer at our disposal. One week from tonight is election night, and I, along with many other TV students from COC, will be reporting live from Channel, or on Channel 20. This is an experience that I am so grateful to be able to take part in. My scrambled point is that live shows have been incredibly beneficial to my learning experience at COC, and they've provided, or they have prepared me for a career that I look forward to beginning, and I feel more comfortable entering the field of journalism having had the opportunity to use the outlets offered by Leon Warden, public access, and Channel 20. That being said, I would like to voice my support for what it's worth for SCV TV's proposal for the future of Channel 20. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boitzen?
Mayor Keller, council members, and Ken Pulskamp, our city manager. I am former council member Tim Ben Boitzen, speaking as a private citizen of Santa Clarita. While serving our country in the United States Air Force for four years, I had the honor and pleasure of serving in a number of locations where the cities were somewhat smaller than Santa Clarita. And one thing that all those cities had, some of them quite a bit smaller, were their own television stations, which was great. You can watch the local news and find out what was happening locally through the television stations. So it was rather exciting a while back when Santa Clarita started to broadcast TV on a regular basis, where they had magazine shows, and newsmakers, and news. I mean, news broadcasts with actual stories, a lot of them very positive about the things that were going on in Santa Clarita, giving people information and updates. And yes, some news stories that had critiques, and were critical, and were telling people that what might be the problem. And it was great, especially at the same time that the LA Times was dropping their coverage, and the Daily News was dropping their coverage, and we were down to less and less press voices, and there was a brand-new press voice, that reporters were going out trying to get the story, and that is important to America. So economics have been challenging, and when the city put out the RFP to continue having an outside entity, they, they didn't get a proposal that would not cost the city some money to continue broadcasting city council meetings and other programming. And the city is proposing to take this independent TV channel in-house, and it's using the economy, the bad economy, as an excuse. The city claims that it will save the taxpayers' money, but what the city's not telling you is how much the city salaries, the people inside the city, will be paid to work on this newly-minted city TV station. The obvious result of this move will mean that there'll never again be a real news story that's critical of the city. That you can be sure. The city needs to get out of the TV business and use some of the millions of dollars of annual franchise fees to pay an independent news organization to carry the city council meetings and other city footage, and put out a new RFP that would be, find an organization that'll serve the citizens of Santa Clarita with a voice of the free press, and not another PR machine for the city. We spend enough money on PR. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Alan Firdman, followed by Susan Shapiro, followed by Ian Lamont. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Alan Firdman. I'm the chair of the Canyon Country Advisory Committee. Certainly, local Santa Clarita TV station has been a great asset to our community. I think you've heard about all of the learning experiences that it brings forth, and also news, local news, that we will not get anywhere else. But I think the most important thing that any news agency can bring to us is diverse opinion. And in many cases, I think that this is something that we really need to safeguard, and it honestly needs to continue. By taking management of a news agency into the city, hiring somebody to maintain it within the city, certainly will lead to a perception, and right now I'm saying it's a perception, that programming or opinion is going to be manipulated by the city. I think that's already been said, but I think it's absolutely true. So I think it's in the best interest of our community, and our city, and all of our residents, that the city of Santa Clarita maintain a contract with an independent agency so that we can be sure that we'll see information on SCV TV that is accurate, that supports diverse opinion, and that's good for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Firdman. Susan Shapiro? And welcome to Susan. This is the lady that's worked so hard for so many years for our public access, and has done a phenomenal job for a long time. Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, hi. So I don't need to say that for almost 15 years, as a cable company employee, I managed the access channel in Santa Clarita. But during that time, I worked with the city, nonprofit schools, producing programs with them, and I had a repeated and unique opportunity to hear over and over and over again how much the production of those programs meant to them, how promoting their events increased attendance, how making videos about their programs helped them spread the word, recruit volunteers, or raise money. While I was working there, our operation was governed by very specific public access rules handed down by the FCC, and those rules prohibit us from working with local businesses, running advertisements, and kind of turned us into, by necessity, a do-it-yourself television station. What I'd like to say a few words about in the time that I have left is my take on the upcoming changes for public TV in Santa Clarita, given the new state franchise, the departure of the cable operator from day-to-day operations. Speaking as a community member with cable experience, I'm keenly aware of the loss of operating monies and cable company oversight, and what that's going to mean initially for our channel. But there's some very substantial benefits to the future of public TV that I would like to mention. First, the PEG capital grants, which are currently estimated at about $200,000, will mean that the future operation will have significantly improved production tools compared to the current and past Channel 20, whose yearly capital budgets were nowhere near that amount. These capital grants guarantee that the future public television can grow and change with technology. More cameras, better equipment will mean that more of the groups that form our city can create better programs, which will bring viewers to the channel or website. Second, the new rules allow commercial programming, which will benefit the nature and quality of the shows, more sports, more entertainment, more news. They'll also allow the new operator to work directly with local businesses to create the videos they need to market their services to local customers. You know, the current economy is putting a real strain on valley businesses, and their need to reach customers only increases as money becomes tighter. And this new channel is going to be able to work directly with them, to provide them with tools, and commercials, and information that their customers need to see. Old Channel 20 couldn't reach out to the business community, or offer them the communication support they needed, but this new one will be able to. Finally, local control will mean the new operator can focus their programs and services on what matters to our residents, just here in Santa Clarita. So I guess I wanted to tell you that my vision of the new public TV channel as a channel and a website, and production company, and everything it will be, is something that I believe can provide greater, more tangible benefit to a wider section of our population than ever before, to individual businesses.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, thanks. Nonprofits and schools, I'll wrap it up. I know that funding the operation of the channel will be difficult, and I understand the good reasons and need to limit expenditures now, but I guess I just encourage you to make sure that you have a vision for what this new channel can be, and that your investment in people and staff is sufficient, because you're going to need people who are dedicated and motivated to use their production and communication skills to serve all of our community. In order to take advantage of these substantial resources that our city is going to be receiving, it's a channel, it's significant money and capital for studios and equipment, you're going to have to make an initial investment in the people who can turn these resources into actual tangible results for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Our next speaker is Ian Lamont, will be followed by Kathy Crone. Ian?
Welcome to Santa Clarita, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. I'm a new member to Santa Clarita. I have the good fortune now to run the Signal, and even though the Signal is a print and web business, I agree with most of the speakers who spoke earlier about having multiple voices. We deserve, Santa Clarita as a community deserves a print, a web, a radio, or TV outlet, and all those voices combined in its coverage. One of the things I encourage you in basically rejecting the staff's recommendation is to think about the energy and the passion, and the pride that goes into any nonprofit, in this case SCTV, and what they do to do what they do annually with all the coverage and all the different programs they put in, and all the great contributions they make to young interns and different educational programs that are out there. And with that, I don't see how the city can possibly come close to providing the same opportunity, even under the best of circumstances. So I would like the council respectfully to reject the staff's recommendation and consider voting on the contract to SCTV management.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Kathy Crone. Kathy will be followed by Bruce Fortine.
Hi, I'm here for, in behalf of Brad Behrens for the Senior Center, as one of the nonprofits that does benefit from SCV TV. It is our recommendation. Brad Behrens, our executive director, did send you all a letter in favor of Leon Warden and SCV TV maintaining Channel 20. In this economy, we all are very well aware that everybody is suffering, especially the nonprofits, and I'm sure we've tried to make sure that you know that the Senior Center needs additional help. Because of that, Leon Warden has never turned away from helping us. He's created PSAs for us, he's been at all our events, even the six o'clock in the morning 5Ks, and covered the whole event for us. He has really gone the extra mile, and it's very difficult for us, because we do not have a marketing budget, to go to the other publications that we have and say, "Look, we need this event publicized," or "We need to do this fundraiser," or "We need this information put out there." And not everybody is able to just give this to these nonprofits. And SCV TV has, and that's critical for us. And so we want to make sure that, as nonprofits, you understand that this is something that we definitely need and can't turn away. And even just having the newsmakers, from that one little interview, we had two, a deputy and a firefighter contact us and become home-delivered meal drivers for us. So I mean, it's critical, the information that gets out there for us, that it maintains that integrity. So we can't say enough for Leon Warden and SCV TV. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Bruce Fortine, to be followed by Gloria Mercado-Fortine.
It's the first time I ever got to go before she did.
Be the last, who?
Yeah, no doubt. Mayor Keller, members of the city council, Bruce Fortine, member of the Board of Trustees of College of the Canyons. You know, I really can't tell you how disappointed I am with the recommendation of the city manager to reject this proposal, but I can tell you how proud I am of everybody who has gotten up here to speak before you. The project that is being presented is well-thought-out. The document is 150-some pages that explains everything that everybody's talking about. I'd like to call your attention to the agenda. It says, "Reject all proposals, and then appropriate funds in the amount of $116,000 from the public, education, and government fund balance." Now, what this would do would be to eliminate two of those three. There would be no public, and there would be no education, and it would be strictly government. And I can't do anything better than what the rest of the folks have said. It's been just amazing, and I'm very proud of everybody. And I certainly would recommend to you personally that you reconsider the recommendation and take a second look. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bruce.